Board will meet in regular session on Tuesday, April 2020 at 9:05 a.m. Via online Zoom with, uh, I guess, one member present here in the courthouse and, uh, two by phone. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Notice to the public, Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for the discussion. Uh, we, uh, if you are, we don't have a microphone. Um. Present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. Normal process on any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The board has given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate and a roll call vote will follow. Approval or amendment of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I will second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solosik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number two, years of service. We have Jessica Cheezick, who is the auditor in the, in the auditor recorder's office, and she's been with us for five years. And we have Blaze Wer, who was also with the auditor recorder's office, and he has been with us for five years. Are either one of you on right now?
They are both on.
We are, okay.
There's Jesse and Blaze. Blaze needs to unmute his line. He so likes to talk to public.
Yeah. Well, let, let's do virtue, virtual congratulations and handshake.
There we go. Can either one of you speak at this time or not? Uh, Jesse or Blaze?
Blaze is on, but I'm getting a message that he doesn't have a microphone on his computer.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Well, congratulations Blaze. Uh, I understand that you and Jesse started on the same day.
April 6th.
April 6th, five years ago. And, uh, I, I hope it's been a, a happy journey for you. And Jesse, you're not with us right now or?
She's there too, but I don't know if she has a mic either. Yes, Blaze is telling everybody. Um, yes, thank you. It has been.
Very good.
They're both awesome to work with. I've so enjoyed working with both of them.
I agree. I have too.
You know, that, that's the nice thing about both of these guys is they're both highly thought of by not only the auditor recorder or coworkers, the supervisors, and most of all, members of the public. Nothing but good reports from anybody they've ever come in contact with in the general public. And that's, that's the most important part is that's who we serve and, and both of these people have been exemplary in that.
We should show our appreciation more often to those folks, uh, instead of every five years like this. So, anyway, thank you from, from the, uh, from the board to you two. Appreciate it. I'm gonna go on to the consent agenda. Number three is approved minutes from regular session of April 14th, 2020. Number four, accept sheriff's quarterly report, January 2020 to March 2020. General basic service fees, seventeen thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. General basic interest checking, nine dollars and eight cents. General basic mileage fees, two thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. Number five, accept annual manure management plan update. Corey Eldridge, ID number six, five, nine, seven, four. Update received and placed on file with no changes to the manure management plan. Number six, accept the annual manure management plan update from JT Farms East Site. ID number six, three, two, zero, eight. Update received and placed on file with the following change to manure management plan, used manure analysis. Number seven, accepted annual manure management plan update. Camco Pork Two Limited Liability Company, ID number five, eight, two, six, seven. Update received and placed on file with no changes to the manure management plan. Number eight, approved transfer of funds. Transfer number nine, zero, eight, a quarterly transfer of six hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars from Rural Services Fund to the Secondary Road Fund. Number nine, approved claims. Approved claims is audited and authorized the county auditor and recorder to issue payment of the same. Listing of claims paid at this meeting and all claims paid in the month of April will be published as part of the first meeting in May. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as printed. Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solosik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, this agenda item was previously approved at the 31720 Board of Supervisors Meeting. Uh, approved personnel action. Hire Julie Stahl, Marshall County Conservation Board. Temporary seasonal part-time pay rate of twelve dollars an hour effective May 4, 2020 to August 21, 2020. A June 1st, 2020 start date was previously approved at the 31720 Board of Supervisors Meeting. Mike, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, the circumstances, uh, because of the COVID.
Put it, move it up here. Start over again, Mike.
Okay. Due to the circumstances of COVID-19, uh, closings of schools, Julie, uh, is able to start an earlier date for us uh, on May 4th. Uh, funds to offset, uh, this move of, of data hire will come from, uh, female reimbursements from damage, uh, from the last spring's flooding. So, um, shouldn't be any, it was not that large of an amount of money anyway, so we're, we're good to go on this. So, she just was able to start at an earlier date than what, uh, had previously been approved and I just want to change that date.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve personnel action with change the start date of June 1, 2020 to the new start date of May 4, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve this personnel action with the change of start date as June 1, 2020. All right, roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solosik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 11, Marshall County Flexible Spending Plan. Discussion of possible action on the Plan Document Amendment and Summary of Material Modification to the Marshall County Flexible Spending Plan. The amendment affects both the medical reimbursement account and the dependent care account and is required to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security CARES Act allowing for certain over-the-county drugs and medicines and certain expenses that are now treated as qualified medical expenses. And number two, the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act, which provides for emergency paid and unpaid leave for employee absences related to the COVID-19. Is there any discussion on this matter?
Um, this is just a requirement due to all of the new legislation. Um, so this is just something we need to have in our, um, plan document.
Just a little housekeeping.
Yes, the next few of these are all housekeeping things.
I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the Plan Document Amendment and Summary of Material Modification to the Marshall County Flexible Spending Plan.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the, uh, Plan Document Amendment and Summary of Material Modification to the Marshall County Flexible Spending Spending Plan. Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solosik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 12, Cobra Administrative Agreement. Discussion and action on the Cobra Administrative Agreement between Bernie Low and Associates Commercial BLA and Marshall County effective July 1, 2020. The agreement will renew automatically for the successive one-year terms commencing upon the initial expiration date. Termination is provided to either party for cause provided to the agreement or to a non-delaying party for cause in the event that an excusable delay continues for more than sixty days.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Cobra Administrative Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Cobra Administrative Agreement. Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solosik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 13, ACA Complete Dashboard and Reporting Essentials Agreement. Discussion and action on the ACA Complete Dashboard and Reporting Essentials Agreement between Bernie Low and Associates and Co. As ACA Complete in Marshall County. The contracts shall automatically renew on the anniversary date of July 1 each year until each party gives written notice or of termination at least thirty days prior to the requested termination date, except for the first six months following the effective dates.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we approve the ACA Complete Dashboard and Reporting Essentials Agreement.
And Mr. Chairman, I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ACA Complete Dashboard and Reporting Essentials Agreement. Is there any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solosik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 14, Marshall County Employee Dental Plan Benefit Plan. Discussion and action on the July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021 renewal of the contract with Delta Dental Plan of Iowa.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, move to approve, uh, the renewal and authorize the chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the renewal and authorize the chairman to sign. Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solosik.
Yes.
Thompson. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 15, Marshall County Employee Health and Prescription Drug Benefit Plan and Marshall County Employee Dental Benefit Plan Rates. Discussion and action on setting the monthly rates for fiscal year 21. Um, I'll go ahead and read this. The Health and Prescription Drug Benefit Plan, the single will be eight hundred and twelve dollars. Employee plus one will be thirteen hundred and six dollars and seventy cents. Family will be one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. The Dental Benefit Plan with, for a single will be thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Employee plus one will be seventy-nine dollars and a family plan will be ninety dollars. Is there any discussion?
And I'll just add one comment. The health and prescription drug plan rates are exactly the same as they were on the prior year. Um, the dental benefit plan, I believe, um, and that is, Mary just confirmed, that is a five percent increase, which is what we discussed during our budget meetings earlier this year. Um, we always tend to run a little short. Now this year, we've kind of gotten saved, honestly, from folks not being able to go to the dentist right now due to the COVID-19. So, um, we're actually gonna be okay now, I think, this year. Um, but the increase will help cover all that for future years.
Is there any other discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the monthly rates for fiscal year 21 as set out above.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the monthly rates for fiscal year 21 as set out above. Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solosik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 16, Statement of Intent Related to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, which is the CARES Act for 457 subsection B plans. Discussion of possible statement of intent when necessary to allow participates in the Marshall County 457 subsection B plans to benefit from the provisions of the CARES Act. Plan amendments may be required at a later date. Participants may benefit in the following ways. Number one, tax favored coronavirus related distributions, CRDs, up to one hundred thousand dollars until December 31, 2020. Details of CRDs include, A, a ten percent early withdrawal tax waiver and ability to pay ordinary income tax in equal installments over a three-year period beginning in tax year 2020. B, participants may repay CRDs within a specified three-year period without the repayments being subject to the annual contribution limits. And C, participants must self-certify they meet specific qualifications, including but not limited to being diagnosed with the COVID-19 virus, spouse or dependent diagnosed with COVID-19, and who experiences adverse financial consequences as a result of COVID-19. Number two, expanded access to loans from their 457 subsection B for one hundred and eighty days after enactment of the law, including new loan limits and the choice to delay loan payments, repayments for new or existing loans. Number three, waiver of 2020 required minimum distributions for any participants who are due to receive an RMD in calendar year 2020 or for those whose first RMD was due by April 1, 2020, but they had not yet received their RMDs by January 1, 2020. That was a mouthful.
It was.
Very good though, Steve. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would move, uh, to approve, uh, to, to issue a statement of intent when necessary to the administrators of the Marshall County 457B Plan to allow Marshall County 457B Plan participants to prevent, benefit from the three, uh, above mentioned provisions of the CARES Act.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to issue a statement of intent when necessary to the administrators of the Marshall County 457B Plan to allow Marshall County 457B Plan participants to benefit from the three above mentioned provisions of the CARES Act. Roll call vote.
Patton.
Yes.
Solosik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 17, Proposal and Discussion Only. DHS location for 206 East State Street, Marshalltown. Ben Brackett with Ferguson Commercial Real Estate Services. Ben, are you still with us?
I am. How are you guys?
I'm good this morning. How about you?
No complaints. Uh, hopefully the, my neighbor who just decided to start mowing, uh, I, I think I got the windows closed quickly enough that you can't hear it, so. Apologies.
It's raining up here, Ben, so.
Fair enough. Well, so, you know, we've, we've spoken before, um, you know, basically with the, a very similar situation with trying to, uh, come to terms with some sort of lease renewal. Um, and, you know, previously the conversation had been, you know, after the tornado, you, you were looking to, um, locate, uh, the agency in a county-owned building. So, you know, about a year has passed, uh, the lease renewal is coming up and, you know, we're trying to put together a proposal that's attractive enough to, uh, retain you guys as a tenant. Um, so we put together, you know, after talking to, uh, Vicky Hendershot, who's the regional manager, um, and getting some feedback from, you know, the employees on site, we put together just a, a quick kind of scope of work. Um, and just kind of wanted to open the conversation instead of, you know, coming at you with a, a bunch of numbers. Just make sure that we're all on the same page since it's, it's sort of a unique negotiation in that, you know, the tenant that we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis isn't actually who's, you know, making the, the decision on how to proceed. So, I, I think that Lisa sent along, um, you know, just a, a basic proposal that just kind of runs through all the work that we're planning to do to the building. Um, that would include, you know, sort of the cosmetic improvements such as carpet and paint. Um, but also, you know, some exterior things that, you know, deferred maintenance over the years that, uh, hasn't been dealt with or has kind of come to a, a attention that, uh, needs some work.
Um, I just forwarded the email to James, so I don't know if he can share that so everyone can see what you forwarded to the, to Lisa and I.
Dylan, Dave, do you, do you have a copy of this?
Okay, okay, good.
Dave, Bill, do you?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Great.
And I, I should just also mention that, uh, the landlord, Bill Ellison, is also on the line. Um, he may chime in, but I just wanted to introduce him as well quickly. That's like.
Very good.
So, based on the conversation that I had with, with Vicky Hendershot, um, I believe that most everything in here covers what she was looking to have cared for. There are a couple other items. Um, for example, she was concerned about, um, some temperature things between the first and second floor. So, we've already, I mean, that's just like a normal thing that we would deal with. So, we've already sent, uh, the HVAC team out there to check it out. So, this would sort of be our, uh, you know, we, we would put some more numbers to it. Obviously, come back with specific rent numbers. Um, but it's a six-figure renovation at this point based on the work that we've got outlined. Um, and so again, we're just kind of looking for a little feedback. Just before, you know, understand, try to understand, I guess, you know, at what point do we provide you a proposal and, you know, do you review it? And then we come back and talk about it. I mean, you know, ultimately, I'm not even positive you guys are willing to look at it. So, I, you know, we just kind of want to get a little feedback.
Ben, I'm reading you want a five-year commitment, uh, if, if you do this work. Is that correct?
Yeah, ideally. I mean, if you want to sign a longer term lease than that, we'd be open to that as well.
Ben, could the, uh, could DHS stay in that building as these renovations are, are going on or not the case?
Well, I think it, it depends. Um, with the, you know, I was there last week and with the, you know, the COVID-19 situation, it was a pretty bare-bones staff, so I, I sort of wonder if it's something we could, you know, if it's something we could come to an agreement with quickly. Um, you know, we would try and get the work done, you know, such as carpet removal and installation while, you know, maybe there were less people in the office. Um, just so we're not having to shuffle people around and do that because obviously that, that will be a challenge. If the situation, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Lucas here, Building and Grounds Apartments. Uh, my question is, uh, if we're doing these renovations with the staff there, uh, like carpet renovations, who's moving the desks and all that so new carpet can be put in? Is that, uh, is that a tenant cost or an owner cost?
We intended to hire a moving company that would, uh, assist with that. I, I spoke to Vicky yesterday just to make, I was just, and I remember Lucas, when we, we were dealing with the tornado, um, you know, we, we discussed the, you know, like the, um, the level of the movers needed to be such that they understood, you know, they understood, they were bonded, I think, is actually the term, right? Okay, sorry. So, um, the moving company that we've talked to is bonded and has moved public records before. Um, so we would, we would intend to do, you know, use someone of that caliber.
Gotcha, okay.
Ben, would you be doing these improvements regardless of who is in the building?
If we had a tenant, yes. Um, I mean, I think if, if, if we're gonna lease the space to a new tenant, yeah, we're gonna do all this work. Um, if you guys leave and we don't have a tenant, we would, you know, eventually we'll have to do the work, but it would probably come more along the lines of with a tenant.
Bill, do you have any comments on this?
Well, um, yes, I, I, I'm not interested in a five-year commitment. I'm more interested in a six-month commitment.
Ben, I, I heard you say you didn't, you didn't want to do the, this renovation until you had a commitment from a, a renter of some kind. Uh, since we don't have a lot of people in there right now, would, would that be an opportunity for you to go in there anyway and do those things? Even if we don't do a, a, a long-term commitment with you or you would just, uh, put it on the back burner at this point?
I'm, you know, maybe there'd be some, some minor things we would do. Um, but I, you know, we certainly wouldn't undertake carpet and paint. Um, you know, some of the, like I said, it's a, a six-figure renovation. So, for, um, you know, for six months more rent, you know, we, we would probably just sign a six-month extension and hope to have another conversation in six months.
I, I would say at this point with everything that we've got up in the air that we should probably maybe have you propose a six-month extension. Uh, there's just too many unknowns at this point for us to either make a commitment or a non-commitment. I know we've got this just on a discussion item this morning, so we can't make any decisions. But if I was to make a recommendation, I would suggest that you just give us a six-month extension at our current terms and we can go from there.
Understood.
Um, Ben, I will say that our current lease, we never actually got a signed one back from the owner.
Okay, I can forward that to you. I have, I've actually pulled that up to look at it, so, um, I'll send it your way.
We never received that, so thank you.
I'm the owner. Can I chime in just for a minute?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Chair and, and supervisors for, uh, leasing the office space for us for, uh, a number of years. And, uh, we do understand that the space does need renovation. We did this last year. Uh, you guys put us on hold for six, for a year. And you're, I, I get that it's gonna be hard for us to re-lease the building. But that, uh, that rent should probably be twenty or thirty thousand dollars more a year after we do the space. And I'm reluctant to, um, just continue it for six months at the current rate because that just tells me, well, we're just kicking the can down the road and you're gonna leave in six months. Uh, and I don't, you know, know that. I'd prefer, if we're gonna do an extension, we do another year. Uh, we've already granted you a one, one-year extension. And so that's, that's, you know, my position. And I'll get offline with Ben after the meeting and, and talk about, uh, leasing terms and what we might do is come back to you and propose an extension for six months and propose you as an extension for one year at different terms. See if I have any questions for me. My name is Bill Ellison. I'm, uh, 6000 Grand Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa, Top Farms, uh, LLOP.
Am I remembering correctly that we're paying almost eighty thousand a year to rent that facility?
Yeah, it's a little over that, I think, but, uh, the, maybe eighty-seven. But, uh, that's a gross rent and at about eight dollars a square foot, if you survey Class B office space, uh, that should be more like a net rent where you pay, you know, three or four dollars a square foot of, of, uh, common area maintenance on top of the, of, of the gross rent. Uh, there's not a lot of inventory in Marshalltown. Ben has done some searching around. I guess, Ben, you, you're more of an expert on, uh, commercial lease rates. You do it for a living. Do you want to, uh, talk to the eighty-seven thousand for ten thousand square feet?
Sure. I mean, you know, and like you said, it's just based on the, uh, you know, Class B office space and what the market, uh, has out there. It's definitely a, an aggressive lease rate though it's in place. And I think that, you know, I, I could pull a little report and send it, send it around if that would help. Um, but it, I think, in a market like Marshalltown, um, the rent that we're providing is, is extremely aggressive.
My concern is this, Ben, is several of the, in, the, the items you have on this list that you're going to do have been promised to do in previous leases going back as far as eight years and they still haven't been done.
Um, this is, I think, Dave, has always been kind of a point of contention between us because it was a verbal, you know, if you go back and read the lease, it's, it, there's nothing in the lease to do this work. My understanding was it's a verbal agreement from the previous landlord. And so our position has simply just been that we're happy to do the work. We just want a, a lease extension in place.
Yeah, and, and I don't want, uh, anything I'm saying to take, uh, you, to let you take that, uh, we aren't very appreciative of having DHS as a tenant in the building. And, you know, frankly, if you do an extension, um, I could see us, uh, doing the break room. you do an extension, I could see us doing the break room and the restrooms updates in a manner that wouldn't inconvenience the employees unnecessarily, if that can be accomplished. The carpet was a $50,000 or $60,000 item, and it was, it would greatly inconvenience the employees, I believe, because be some noise and, you know, a lot of activity to move that much, that many file cabinets and offices and desks and carpet around it. So, certain, if we do the carpet, certain parts of the building would be out of commission, you know, a day or two at a time as that carpet is laid.
Well, like it's been said, we can't make a commitment or make any decisions on this today, anyway. We appreciate your comments on this. Is there anything else that anyone wants to share at this point?
I believe the current lease expires the end of July, July 30.
That's what I have also, end of July.
So, is it safe to say that the best course of action would be for us to provide some sort of proposal, you know, probably some sort of six-month proposal, then, you know, also additional proposals, maybe a little longer term, get it to you guys for review, and then, you know, hop on again in a couple weeks, or?
I think that'd be good, Ben.
I do, too. Let's bring it up again at our next board meeting. That'd be the thing to do.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We'll do that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for coming on with us. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. 18, Marshall County Contract for Services with Youth and Shelter Services of Marshall County. Approved Fiscal Year 21 Contract Between Marshall County, Iowa and Youth and Shelter Services of Marshall County for the Fiscal Year 21 to Procure for the Youth and Marshall County Certain Services as here and after described in order to divert troubled youth from formal court involvement, out-of-home placement, and delinquency.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we approve the Fiscal Year 21 Contract with Youth and Shelter Services of Marshall County. Marshall County agrees to provide funding in the amount of $11,000 for services in the Fiscal Year 2001 and authorize the chairman to sign the contract.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Fiscal Year Contract with Youth and Shelter Services of Marshall County. Marshall County agrees to provide funding in the amount of $11,000 for services for Fiscal Year 2001, 2021, and authorize the chairman to sign the contract. I'm proud to vote on this. We, Marshall County has been supporting YSS, I think, one of the first supporters for this group, and it's been at least 25 years, if I remember correctly, or maybe even more. Does anyone have any better numbers than that?
I think we're 25.
Very good.
This might be 26.
I believe it is. Yep, I believe it is. If there's no other discussion, roll call vote.
Patton?
Yes.
Solosik?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 19, Sheriff's Department Extension to 2080 Agreement Between Marshall County and the City of Clemens for Law Enforcement Protection. Discussion of Possible Action on the Extension Agreement Regarding the 2080 Agreement Between Marshall County and the City of Clemens for Law Enforcement Protection Within the Corporate Limits of the City of Clemens. The agreement is effective July 1, 2020, June 30, 2021. The City of Clemens agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $4,175.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Extension to 2080 Agreement Between Marshall County and the City of Clemens effective July 1, 2020, June 30, 2021. City of Clemens agrees to pay Marshall County the sum of $4,175.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the 2080 Agreement Between Marshall County and the City of Clemens. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Patton?
Yes.
Solosik?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 20, Public Forum. It's a time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No ash will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum.
Good morning, Steve. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, this is Jared Heil, Marshall County Treasurer, and the governor's proclamation that she had yesterday, it does extend further the property tax deadlines, as well as motor vehicle registration and titling deadlines, to next month, May 27. So, that, the property tax deadlines extended to 27th of May. This also then goes into our timelines of notification for tax sales. So, our tax sale will be delayed this year. We do not have a date on that yet, but it's something that we're trying with our Treasurer Association to be uniform across state on how the tax sale is going to be done this year. So, things up in the air, but we're still working ahead as we can and do the best we can through it.
Hey, Jared, how many, how big a percentage of property taxes have been paid so far?
Typically, I just looked last year, as of today, last year, so April 28, 2019, we had $1.1 million was not collected of the $55,000, $56 million that we normally collect. When we then send delinquent notices out, typically the May 1, and the bulk of all that gets collected, we get down to about $300,000, $400,000 we offer at the tax sale. Currently, we have $2.9 million sitting out there uncollected of the $55,000, $56 million, and the question is, of that, what is it? People that are able to pay that are just hanging on to it because, hey, the deadline's extended? Or is that, what of that number represents those that are truly hurting and unable to pay?
Jared, is this, could this potentially affect the county's cash flow, or are we okay right now?
I would think, I mean, it just depends on when the deadline actually ends up being. I would say, from the county's perspective, we would have enough in our fund balances to cover that percentage for that timeframe until we get to the tax sale, but, yeah, I can't speak for all the other entities. I would guess the cash flows are all right, because we have collected, you know, $53 million of that $56.
And have we forwarded that on to the other two taxing bodies, being the school system and the cities?
Forwarded to them that this has been extended?
Well, the amount that we've taken in, that's their cut of the property taxes. Have they received it?
Oh, what we collected so far, yes. That was a portioned out. Yeah, we are still portioning monthly of everything we've collected.
Okay.
It's just they'll be a little behind, because not everything is...
Everybody should be in pretty good shape, then.
Yeah.
This year.
Very good. Thank you, Jared. Is there any other discussion, public forum? Not hearing any. It's time for adjournment. The next regular session is May 12, 2020, at 9:05 a.m. All business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the County Auditor and Recorder's Office or the Board of Supervisors' Office by Thursday, May 7, 2020, at 1:00 p.m. There being no further business to come before the board, the meeting is adjourned at 9:51 a.m. Thank you all for participating.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day. Stay safe, stay healthy.
You, too. Bye.
Yep. See you next time.